How much? It's only two hundred?
I don't know.
Two hundred per space, you have twenty required.
Square feet times twenty.
I think you're nine eighteen.
Around the parking lot would have to be paid.
One eighty, ten twenty.
Well, twenty spaces is four thousand square feet. Something else I need to consider when you're discussing this is your gun. Your development in Montego is not limited to large commercial projects. You're gonna have a lot of small gift shops and antique shops or whatever people are gonna deal like the ice cream shop down there. They don't have paved parking and...
But if you know who was, whoever was willing to build the building?
Well, I know before that, but I'm just saying.
I think it's triggered by square footage and retail space, so I have no...
But I mean, right, if there's other small mom and pops.
There's gonna be more stuff coming along that's gonna be small and it's not gonna be big. And like, you know, there are some businesses that don't get, they don't get heavy deliveries. Probably get UPS or they might have a little post office and get it, so. The big trucks don't always come into play.
If they get the heavy traffic, they're gonna have to fix the day in line, we're not gonna have any customers.
That's right.
All right, got one minute, guys.
At the church, we have a pad with three ADA parking spaces and we know that's not enough for our, so we're gonna, we're working on that. So there is, there are issues with gravel and ADA.
Gotcha. All right, uh, you guys ready to resign? Resign. Right, okay. Adjourned, thank you. All right, he's got a second. All right, all those in favor? All right, very good. All right, we're gonna move on to one minute. Ian go.
Hey, we're already convening, I'm looking at the zoning ordinance in that map. Storage facilities are not permitted in C one, only in C two.
Well, but this was, these were grandfathered and they said, but I'm just saying in C two, we still need to look at that.
So they're allowed in C two, but not in the downtown quarter.
That's what I'm saying, we do know that was a doubt, but I'm just saying, it doesn't happen in C two, look at C two where it is.
Alrighty, I'm going to, alright, thank you, quick, Ike, I need to break, I had to walk away. All right, um. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, Montego Regional Planning Commission meeting. Uh, Richard Black.
Here.
Janet Miller Schmidt.
Here.
Ed Provo, he's here, but he stepped away, Durain, gone, Peter Beasley.
Here.
Marilyn Robin.
Here.
I'm a Russell. All right, let's move on to approval of previous meeting minutes. Y'all have this in your packet, were there any additions or corrections?
I sent everybody two. And I had one correct, it was like a gram, I was correcting, I missed grammar and stuff and then I...
Grammar? I can't do grammar.
No, I tweeted that in the, I did, and I think I deleted one sentence about, and I, and I've already, I think I sent you...
You sent it to me and I've sent it to everybody, the corrected one.
Oh, okay.
So they've all had it in there.
Okay.
So that was the only correction, it was grammar and...
There was like a sentence.
You can watch Louisiana, man. Is that a character screen?
I think y'all is word.
Yeah.
Um, all right, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, I need a second.
A second?
Alrighty. All those in favor? I, Ed, you, Ed, did you have any meeting minutes?
No.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, and opposed? Very good. All right, let's move on to staffing committee reports. Uh, it looks like you have two things.
Uh, two things and both of them have not been approved. So there was one in the Bayard's and subdivision of the combination of two lots, I sent back revisions, they have not sent me back their updated plat. And then the second one was Maxwell Estates, which I think there was some confusion because I think they sent you their plat to get signed, but they never sent it back to me after the revision from me. I, I think I emailed him after we spoke.
To get it back?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
So he needs to send it to me and then he can bring it back.
But he left his number because he said you had approved it.
I had it.
Whenever I told you I was calling you today, you were coming up early.
Yes.
That's why I was gonna check to see because...
I did not.
Okay.
I even emailed him and said, I have not approved this, you need to send me back your final plat before you give it to us at home.
Debbie, let's make sure we tell him tomorrow that he does get that message too.
Okay, yes.
That was the answer.
And that's all that, that's it, is for your minor approval?
Yeah, staff approval, very, uh, minor subdivisions.
Okay, gotcha. All right, uh, anything else? Gotcha. Old business, we have none, let's move on to the fun, new business. Uh, we have got the build-in permit expiration zoning code amendment. And I'm gonna call on Nate to kind of explain that to us.
Same thing I just did?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's on five and an action.
So, so...
So, the current zoning ordinance of the town of Montego allows building permits to go six months before they expire. There's no progress on building permit. The revision that I have proposed is to allow, is to change that zoning ordinance to allow for one extension of that building permit for an, up to an additional six months, but then to explicitly state that that building permit expires. Right now, our language, because we have, um, because it doesn't talk about any subsequent expiration, the international building code takes over and the international building code allows for indefinite extensions of building permits. And as I said in the workshop, I think this is good for the town for two reasons. One, it encourages our developers when they receive a building permit to begin construction and get a timely inclusion. Uh, that's good not only for bringing in new businesses, but also, um, we pay a building inspector a set rate regardless of whether those building permits are progressing. So it's in our best interest to encourage the businesses to have those building permits, um, progress. Uh, this is not that the project has to be done in twelve months, it's just that the project has to make substantial progress within twelve months. The other thing it allows the town to do is to regain some control. And I know, I think you and I just had a, a brief back and forth about, um, a certain development that's been the topic of a lot of conversation. And I think regardless of how you feel about that development or any development, having the town have a, um, an element of control is a good thing. It does not, so having building permits expire doesn't take away the people's right indefinitely to do what they want to with their property. It simply says, we've given you the right to build, we're asking that you build in a timely manner, and if you don't, we're asking you to come back and get a new permit. Now, Ed brought up some good points in the workshop, it may not make sense to charge them the full price for a, a subsequent building permit because our costs have not been accrued, uh, to our planner and to, to Debbie and to others in the office to maintain that permit. So maybe we offer a reduced rate on the subsequent permit application. But by allowing that permit, it puts control back in the town without, without putting an undue burden on the developers. So this came out of the, the codes committees that, that Ed and, uh, Richard Black and several of us have been on. Uh, this is one of several and it just seemed easy to do.
Okay, commissioners, what say you?
Well, we talked about the, the hardship, I mean, I mean, I don't know if we could put some language in there that where the extension could be granted past that twelve month period, could be granted with, uh, documented hardship that predicted them from the meet to whatever percentage requirement it's in. I don't know how to put that in words. But, I mean, you, we could throw every example in the world, whether it be COVID or whether it be this, but it's gonna have to be, it's not, I, I don't think we need to define it where it's an automatic extension. We can say it could or may be granted based on certain events without having to go in and define, I got sued or the injunction or all this kind of stuff.
What if, what if you shifted after a year to the planning commission and required that the full planning commission make the decision?
So, but what are you gonna do when you've got a certified building and that's the, that's the point that Earl brought up?
And then, so this only gets triggered if the building inspector says that there's not progress. So the building inspector, we don't take any power over the building instructor, he's still driving the bus.
That's what I'm saying.
This is giving, this is giving the building inspector another tool.
Uh, we need to understand that this, this is not, this is for going forward, new projects. It's not gonna grandfather in anybody.
Right.
And behind us, it's only for projects going forward from the time the council accepts it.
And our building inspector makes the decision of substantial progress.
So if he says it's substantial progress, we don't even see the progress?
Then, then we don't need to get involved in it.
So he's made it...
But if there's a third party that wants to dispute that, it gives us a tool if we choose to, if we choose to take it.
That makes sense.
It's, but, but the building inspector still makes that call, we don't take it away from the building inspector.
And hardship must be defined, uh, what's the other, what's the percentage that you charge? What's the percentage, if I'm looking at, it's a thirty thousand dollar, I don't know what the building permit, I know some are twelve, some have been fourteen.
But I mean, is it based, how is it calculated, based on the percentage of the...
Well, he, the building inspectors is the one that calculates it with the two thousand eighteen codes.
But is it based on square foot cost?
There's a formula, he uses for the entire, for the entire building project. And of course, he's the one who calculates.
If he's already gone through that one time, what's twenty-five percent, he, he needs skin in the game. If he hadn't built in a year, he needs, he needs something.
Well, that's what I'm saying, what would be that percentage, you're gonna define, twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent.
In, in my mind, and, and again, it's you guys' decision, but in, in my mind, I would say, come up with a hardship provision or a reduced rate for the application, because it seems like this is two solutions to the same problem. If, if you have a reasonable hardship, um, then you can grant the exception. But if the building permit is only a percentage of the original building permit, you, the town still accrue costs, right?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Regardless of their hardship, the town accrue costs.
Well, if you charge them twenty-five percent, he's got skin in the game, he's starting over. I, I don't know how long he's, are we gonna give him another six months at that point?
I would think it's six months.
So he's starting over.
You're starting over, but charging again.
He's got up to a year, I guess.
Everything costs would change, because we talked about ordinances change, things change, it's gonna be a totally new review, so that's the way it goes. But they're only paying twenty-five percent based upon the new ordinances, same landscape.
But I don't think after two years.
No, I think you're done.
He's done.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
And as you know, my only concern is, uh, injunctions for stop work by, uh, by lawsuits. Would that be classified as hardship?
So, I mean...
I don't think we need to define hardship, we're gonna be, we're gonna be caught in the...
Yeah, I think if you're giving off a reduced rate for the, for the second obligation, you're granting them a hardship exception.
Yeah, I would feel comfortable the planning commission would make that decision, well, you know? If there's a hardship, I would think the planning commission would take that into account there and, and that's the human aspect.
But it would only come to the planning commission if the building inspector had not extended it and said twelve months is up, then he would have to come back to the planning commission and present his case.
Yeah, that's the developer coming to the planning commission saying, hey, my time is, uh, I've had, I've had these extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, but I don't think we can define, that's to me.
Yeah.
You could determine, um, if a hardship, if it's a hardship to extend or to grant them another...
I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't leave that with the building inspector.
Building inspector.
You can sit, you can leave that with the building inspector.
Maybe that would be best to, with the building inspector.
Only problem with him, you get politics involved in that to some degree.
Well, there's politics involved in everything.
I understand. I'd go have seven people disagree with him at one point.
Yeah, that, that was the idea behind the planning commission, is that after a year, it's, it's expiration. And this doesn't talk at all about site plans, you know, if you wanted to make, if you want to make it clearer that the planning commission had a purview, then the, the site plan would require they were, they, and then, and again, because of Tennessee law, you can't change the use, but I, I would think you could have it go back for after a year. And maybe that's, maybe that's clear and easy. You, permit expires after six months, you do a single six months extension, and then, um, you are required to bring back your site plan for review by the planning commission and they can grant you another six months at a reduced rate for a new permit. Would that make it cleaner? I don't know, I'm, I'm making it up as I go.
I prefer like having M Task, we have somebody with zoning that can look at this because we do, we are dealing with TCA codes, like a vested property with site plans, we did that class, if you remember. And so when it sells, there's certain things that TCA code protects, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's...
Can we make these recommendations, send it down to M Task, because we have a zoning person that's working on some ordinances for us anyhow?
Sure.
And then let them approve the process, or you can put that in, because I know, yeah, get them passed, get the M Task looks at this.
Send the updated language with the provisions of hardship and that full package can be sent to...
Well, I, I, I'm not on the committee, so, um, I've sent my language to you guys, if y'all wanna put hardship, like I said, my, my, my gut feeling.
I can send it down, we'll send it down from the office, I'll get it up and send it to M Task.
Once that happens, I can put together an ordinance so that you can...
And y'all are gonna decide whether you wanna do, whether you wanna propose to M Task a reduced fee on the subsequent permit or...
Does anyone have an opinion on this?
Thank you, Dave.
Anybody here watching have an opinion on this? Okay, just wanna make sure. All right, good?
All right. So just to clarify, that, um, this language will be sent to M Task to review and then I'll be sent the language so I can put together an ordinance to come back before we can see, is that correct?
Their, yeah, their recommendation, you can do that.
Right, is that good for you, Marilyn?
Yeah, we can do that tomorrow, we'll, we'll send it to Hana tomorrow, so send it to the real home.
Okay, and then it's back here.
In that part of case, you're going to include, I've heard two things. You're going to include the hardship.
Yes, that would be a conversation, you should have that conversation with Marilyn's because she's gonna send that language to M Task to review first.
Were we setting any language in place without the cost or the direction that this decision went?
Well, we can...
I figure it's part of it.
Yeah, we can send, is it a, and we do a percentage of costs. And also, can the hardship, Ed, you and I can talk in the morning before we send it to you if you want to, that's okay.
Get it close as we can.
Yeah, and then we'll let them review it, we'll come back with leave on what they recommend and send it back to you, Anya.
All right.
They're still working on ordinance, they've been working on for about three weeks or four weeks now, so hopefully it'll be fine.
All right, is that good with all, all your commissioners? Is that all good for you, Ed? All right, very good. Thank you, Ed. Um, permitting storage facilities as special, special exemptions use in C three. Uh, Anya, I'm just gonna let you have that one.
Okay, so, based on our discussion at the workshop, it seemed like you were, you wanted to maybe explore the idea of changing storage units to be special exceptions in both C two and C three. And my advice was to include additional provisions. So if you look on the back page of your agenda, uh, I went ahead and snipped sections in your zoning ordinance that includes everything about storage facilities. You don't have a lot of provisions included in that, so my recommendation is, um, include, I could bring forward some more, uh, like, for example, I'm looking at Jasper's zoning ordinance right now and their provisions, uh, they require, uh, indoor, only indoor storage units contained, contained within the confines of the building where access to the individual units is through the, a main entrance. Enclosed storage units, uh, let's see, they have, they have very specific, um, requirements that outside storage of vehicles, motorhomes, RVs, boats, um, the area has to be fenced by a six-foot tall opaque fence. And then the PC self-determined suitable locations on case-by-case basis. Another thing included in that is, um, lighting, I saw something about lighting. All outdoor light shall be shielded to direct light and glare only onto the self-storage, uh, self-service storage premises and may be of sufficient intensity to discourage vandalism and theft. Said lighting and glare shall be deflected, shaded and focused away from all adjoining properties and public roadways. So those are the kind of things that you could add, and I could even bring forth to you, but I wanted to make sure that, that's still the direction you wanted to go in.
Commissioners?
And this is going to be, assuming that we're gonna make it a special exception under C two entry?
Would you like to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sure, yeah, so.
Okay, so, I guess you wanna put that all together in one ordinance where you're making it special exceptions and where, I mean, maybe bringing, putting together...
Qualifications.
Qualifications.
Yes, I like that, one question, uh, item D, the landscaping outside of the fence. Does that exist currently or would that be an upgrade when we move C two and C three into special conditions?
We can, uh, you wanna keep that in, is that what you're asking?
I'm trying, I don't understand it, I'm just...
A landscaped screen shall be planted on the exterior of the fence to conceal a fence and a compound from public view. So I guess this is additionally, this is outlined in your fencing.
So it's an existing regulation?
Yes.
It's not new?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, for all new stores, self-storage facilities.
Gotcha. Any other questions, any other additions?
Um, I'm trying to determine, like, I guess I can work on this and send it to you via email and we can do something, what we did with the ADUs where everyone can read it, send me back their, uh, any edits and then that's what can go forward, if you remember.
Yeah.
But definitely C two and C three.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on that one? All right, very good. All right, and then moving to our last item, uh, changing zoning ordinance requirement for paved parking lots only for site lands. Anya?
Okay, so, uh, yeah, it seems like it's a bigger discussion deciding if we want to continue requiring all of new development in commercial areas with twenty spaces or more to have paved parking or if we wanna have some kind of conditions in place that would allow some businesses to have gravel parking lots.
You said twenty and more, so like a small mom and pop, 'cause I mean, that's something that we, you know, would love to see more of here, like say, along the Mount Joe Trail or something, I'm really not sure. Um, that wouldn't apply, that would only need, you know, say five spots.
It's based on the... That are square footage of the building.
Okay, so cute little small building would not require a pavement?
Yes. So that is already...
Like moody's?
Yeah, like a moody's. Yeah, that one would require pavement.
Okay.
Now, isn't there certain areas that we've had in the town before where they had to put in those catch basins because of drainage, the way it drained? So with the property, they have to be looked at and reviewed, because I know in the past that there's certain businesses had to have catch basins before it went onto the street. So how would you deal with that if you had a gravel parking lot? I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering, how does that work? And we don't have John here and we don't have Butter here, but we do have some of it. So it would work regardless of the catch basin?
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, so that wouldn't interfere with that part? Okay.
But I don't want to box anybody out here, I don't want to be, tell people you have to have concrete or asphalt if you've done a mine and rock business. I don't see, we have to have room for both segments, and so, maybe just twenty parking space? I'd like to know a little bit more about what size building, I'm thinking that's not, that's gotta be less than fifteen hundred square feet. You think so, or usually about two to one?
Let's see, there, I can read you what the requirements are for business and commercials. So for office, commercial and retail uses, one space is required per two hundred fifty square feet. For restaurants, one space for one hundred square feet of dining room floor area plus one space for every team employees.
Even higher ratio. So, that's just, um, I think what, to my mind, the question is where do you draw the line? Is ten and twenty parking spaces, is that, what's that represent? Does it go up and down from there? Just to make that decision, I'd like to know that.
Okay.
Four thousand square foot building, right? Two hundred tons.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe.
Right.
It's a building.
Maybe we're noting with, um, with Jason in question, you know, I, I think the way it was presented, Anya assumed that it was four thousand square feet of retail and he, and he, she went back to him and said, hey, it's really not, so maybe you don't need those twenty spaces and you, therefore you don't need paving, but he had already decided to go to somewhere else.
So, I mean, his was an anomaly anyway. I mean, where he is, I mean, it's not like he was trying to get it approved in the middle of town without paper. I mean, he's in the country across from the army.
But it's hard sometimes.
I understand, but, I mean, we're talking about changing rule because of one anomaly.
Exactly, so we don't have to go down this line.
I think twenty, twenty spaces, um, really is a good trigger.
Yeah, I mean, a little mom and pop.
Mom and pop would not have that.
Yeah, I'm not gonna have that.
What do y'all think? On this, you just have to say this, you have one person here, the trip parking lot is paved, you know, like dumping in, you know, that area, you've got, yeah, and then you've got the person next door that it's not. We're gonna be dealing again, because we've been in this situation in the past, it wasn't approved, it didn't have to be approved before. But look at the problem that's presented to the neighbors, to the people because it wasn't required to be that way. So do we know enough yet to make this decision? I mean, we wanna be user-friendly, don't get me wrong. Not, was it gonna present, you know, what's, what's the definition, what are the boundaries, what are we gonna do here? Because let's say you have a new park, you know, dealership right here and then you have your business that has no pavement and it's all dust and mud and all the other stuff coming over. So I'm just saying, what do you do then? I'm not, I don't get the answer, I'm just saying there, you gotta look at all the situations and make the best decision to determine that. Should they have landscaping if they don't have, you know, if it's gravel parking lot, if they can, if they got around their property boundaries? I don't know, I don't know that answer, I'm just saying, what do we do to look at all scenarios before we make a decision like that?
Well, I think, uh, Ed brought up the fact of, um, let's leave it alone.
Well, and, and your fourth bullet point, I mean, it's right there, permanent gravel for C two, C three with twenty spaces or less, if it's not a major traffic generator.
Right, which you need is already in place.
Right.
So why change it?
So why change it? Anybody wanna go forward with changes or is what we have adequate?
I don't know why we changed it to, to be honest, I think we've gotta make, I think it could be changed if we need to make sure we make the right decision that we're taking.
Yeah, work for doing it.
Did that answer you?
I, I think if we're gonna do any, we shouldn't do anything, but I think we could ask them to consider when they make an application, that we could ask them to consider doing it because of dust and mud. But I don't think we should do anything to change it because of all the other businesses around it, around them.
Well, the change came in two thousand eighteen, it came in that kind of...
Leave it alone.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Richard says leave it alone, Ed says leave it alone, Janet, what do you say?
I said leave it alone.
Leave it alone, Marilyn, what do you say? Leave it alone, Peter, what do you say?
Leave it alone.
Leave it alone it is, I love it. All right, are we missing anything, Anya?
That is it.
All right, this is time for citizens. Anybody wanna say something for three minutes? Say, hey?
Makes you a bit of a posh.
Yeah, come on, yeah.
There you go, the timer night.
So, at the last city council meeting, uh, Janet presented to us a proposal from the planning commission uh, on adding accessory drilling units to the Montego building code. Um, and through the conversation, it was then...
I, I asked, I asked to, to not make a vote on it because I was concerned about the charges for water and whether there are water meters on the separate buildings and, and it's not in the code. And I talked with Anya about it and it goes to the council, the council has the right to change the ordinance.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure you guys talked about it so that we can talk about it. Well, that's why I'm bringing it up now, I'm asking you to talk about it so that we can actually maybe take action on it as a council.
The PC, uh, made their recommendation and now, uh, it is in, within the city council jurisdiction to change the ordinance as long as there's, I think it has to be majority vote or maybe unanimous vote.
Okay.
So what I did after talking to Marilyn was just add a question to the existing application that just asked if the ADU was planned to be a short-term rental.
And I've got some more stuff for council meeting for our workshop that we need to look at adding to that ordinance because we haven't approved it yet. It's like, is it, like, I mean, that's something we have to do. That's what I'm saying, but we have to do that part.
Okay, just making, making sure, y'all didn't wanna talk about it some more?
We did our job, we should...
I'm just making sure, uh, everybody at the booth.
Yes, hey.
One comment, um, we've, we've crafted that statement, ADUs, and, and what it says, it, it's an accessory to a unit, it's one, all right? And we put them behind the building. And we put them behind the building, beside the building, we limited their setbacks and their square footages and we kept them a part of the structure. How could you possibly ask somebody to get a, a new water meter for that?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't agree with that.
I'm sitting.
Okay, I'm just a question.
I just know we were talking about it.
I'm here now.
I'm with you, Ed.
Well, I mean, it's two separate buildings according to the ordinance, because this is something for us to review, because there's notes here. If you have two separate structures, you're supposed to have two separate meters, that's an ordinance.
Right now, because we don't have accessory dwelling.
No, but still, but I'm saying, that's, we've got several things to work on, council does.
We're gonna talk about it, that's, that's all I'm asking for.
Alright, Richard says move along, alright.
Your turn, Earl.
Yep. Seven.
Uh, anybody else?
When Hana, Earl is, um, actually doing some interviews for a building, a certified building inspector, who's a state of Tennessee. Then the town can decide, we can decide politically, uh, somebody's gonna be trained, but it takes about a year to get the training. So since Earl said he would still be involved, but he's interviewing, talking to a couple of two or three different people. He's still working, but he said he would get back with the council and let us know something before next meeting with the folks he's talked to.
That's a big spot right there.
Yeah, and there's a lot of liabilities that come from, if they're not certified, so he's working on that for us, so.
That's a big deal. Alright, anybody else? Oh, come on, Anya. Alright, who's gonna motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Alright, y'all don't fight during that second, all those in favor? Alright, let's get out of here. Thanks everyone for coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's for you, Leslie.